The School Finance Research Collaborative has completed Michigan's first comprehensive school adequacy study to determine what it truly costs to educate a child. The collaborative is a diverse bipartisan group of business leaders and education experts, from Metro Detroit to the U.P., who agree we must change how Michigan schools are funded. The collaborative study was recently completed by the nation's top two school finance research firms, with input from nearly 300 Michigan educators. The study determined that per pupil funding should be increased to provide all students with a high-quality education that helps them achieve and succeed. The study found that it costs a minimum $9,590 to educate a child in Michigan, regardless of location, income, learning challenges, or other circumstances. That amount does not include transportation, food service, or capital costs, and only includes pension costs at 4.6 percent of wages. The report recommends that brick-and-mortar charter schools and traditional public schools should be funded at the same level, and quantified additional costs for special education, English language learners, and students living in poverty. The report concluded that 10 percent additional to the base cost should be provided for career and technical education involved students. It found it costs 14,130 hours to educate a preschool student. The report also determined that funding must be adjusted based on district size, with smaller districts receiving increased funding. And the report concluded that districts in geographically isolated areas and student transportation costs should be addressed so that the unique needs of every district or charter school are fully funded. Rather than a cookie-cutter, one-size-fits-all approach to school funding, Michigan's school finance system needs to take a more research-based, individualized approach. Michigan policymakers now have a roadmap to provide adequate and equitable funding for a preschool-12 education that prepares all students for bright futures. So while Michigan currently ranks at the bottom in student performance, this new study charts a whole course to change that. So much has changed in the last 25 years, and now it's time for the way we fund schools to embrace the future and change as well. To read this study or learn more, visit www.fundmischools.org.
Tacos.
All right, thank you. All right, so that was a very quick explanation of a presentation that I've seen, I think John Paul, you've seen. It's normally an hour to hour and a half, two hours, that goes into this study that's just been completed on funding for Michigan schools. As I have said at previous board meetings, Waterford School District is second lowest funded in the state. In terms of the tiers of funding, we are one off the bottom, and bottom one's only about, I think, was it $12, something away from ours, $11, $12? You get to the bottom worst-funded, so we're $11 above that, at about $7,600. And then you look at other districts like Birmingham, Bluefield Hills, that are getting $11,000, $12,000 a student in funding. So the recommendations that came out of this were shown here. They're looking at the study, and they studied studies even before they got here, and I'm not going to go into all of that. I think that the Oakland County School Boards Association is offering one of their evening, you know, presentations that's going to be on this coming up in the next month. But this study allowed us to look at what does it really take to educate a child in Michigan? The exciting part, I thought it was exciting, I loved hearing that number, $9,590, because that sounded like a whole lot more money than the $7,600 that we get per student here. But the one thing that we have to note is the $9,500 versus our foundation grant from the state aren't necessarily created equal. It's not apples-to-apples. In this plan that we're looking at, that just got done in the study, it only had 4.6 percent retirement. It didn't have any money in there for transportation. It did include the entitlements like Title I, Title II, 31A, and then it gave special weight over and above the $9,590 for students who require, you know, additional types of support, like ELL, Special Ed, preschool, students in poverty, and even district size and geographic location. The people in the study were very well represented, you know, even in the Upper Peninsula. They have some real unique issues in terms of their geography that make their transportation costs sky-high, and things that we don't have to deal with in a more suburban type of area. So when you take a look at ours, and as excited as we can be about the $9,590, it's not a good comparison. We're including very high numbers in retirement in our number. We include transportation costs in there. We really don't break them out on a per-student basis. We do not include our entitlements, so that's not part of the number, and those are some fairly significant numbers in our budget, and so that's over and above our $7,659, whereas would be included in the $9,590. But we offer no weight for any of these other types of special circumstances. So as you can see, you know, it's, when you just look at the numbers, it looks great, but when you look within the numbers, they're, we're not comparing the same thing here. What's interesting is when you take a look at the weights, this would be over and above at $9,590. So just in fact, you were talking about the parent engagement night and explanation of the LEEDA, which is an assessment for where you are in your English language development, and so depending on where students are on that test would get additional monies based on that score. Special education, you'll see that if you were in, you know, considered mildly, in Special Ed, it'd be .70 increase, moderate 1.15. So that's not, that's 1.15 over what's already there, so that's, you know, one, a whole 110%, 115 percent of that number. And then for students who require a real specialized program, that even think it should be dealt with locally, that should be a state reimbursement. And that would be talking about, you know, possibly the students would go to Kingsley, Montgomery, and we know that, you know, our tuition for those programs, if you're in the severely emotionally impaired parts, about $42,000, and even higher for severely cognitively impaired. So that's kind of, you know, they think that the state ought to be taking care of that and not have it be a local expense. And then poverty was .35. So that's all over above that number, and we know that that would, you know, greatly help us in the types of extra services that we offer students who need those kinds of things. The further study is defining poverty. You know, how are they going to decide what that really means? Where, if there's just 1.35 addition for poverty, what is poverty? What number are we going to put towards that? Transportation costs, they did an estimate, but this, this study did not cover transportation. The estimate was an additional $973 per student for transportation. And so that's kind of like the baseline where we'd start for those additional costs. So they did recommend that an additional transportation study needed to be done. They also thought there's cost-of-living differences from community to community across the state, and that that would need to be looked at to see if there needed to be another variable for those places where cost of living is higher than others. And a formula for a capital cost as well. As we look at all of these things, as it's probably turning in your head is, man, it seems like a lot of money, and way more money than our school districts are currently funded now by the state. We were very excited to, you know, hear that we're looking at $238 more than we get now as our funding for next year. And that's a great number. That's one of the best numbers that we've heard in a long time to get that kind of funding. This would be an incredible number to, for us to get, and the things that would be possible are amazing. Which also means this is not going to be something that they can snap their finger legislatively and make this happen. This is going to require boards across the state, administrators across the state, staff across the state, to continually make this a topic. This has just been released now, but there's been a lot of studies on a lot of things, and they get put on the shelf in a binder and forgotten. This is one that truly could make a difference in education, truly make a difference in this state. And so it's one that we want to try to keep alive because it's so important that we have adequate funding to offer the kinds of opportunities for all our kids, no matter if they're ELL or Special Education or in poverty, that we can offer the services that they need. John Paul, I know you've been to many of these presentations before as well. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, the, you know, it's, it's good to see this, actually, because you're actually comparing Waterford to what the study has talked about, but the actual presentation by the collaborative was supposed to be this past Saturday, and they canceled it because of the snow. So unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to, to participate in that. But a lot of the talk amongst the, you know, the school board members at Oakland County is that this was a long-awaited piece of information that we wanted to get. We've all really thought that the way that school districts are funded has not been equal, or has not been equitable. So what we had really pushed a lot for is that every school district would be looked at personally, as to what are your situations, what's your demographic, which Keith was talking about, in the Upper Peninsula, you're looking at transportation issues, the geography piece of it. So, you know, the, the study, I think it's, it's a start for sure, and I think it really makes me happy to see that there's some recognition that the number is high, but when I see this comparison with Waterford and some of the things that are still missing from it, you know, I think we all can agree that there, there has to be more funding. If that number is the $9,590, in my opinion, hearing what I'm hearing tonight and kind of what I've been hearing in the School Board Association circles, is that it really should be higher than that. It should take into consideration a lot of other things. But, you know, it's nice to hear, though, the comparison with Waterford and how it all comes together. And they're actually doing this collaborative presentation at different venues all throughout the next few months, and like I said, a lot of us were very disappointed that on Saturday they canceled the one of the Oakland County School Board offices over here, because many of us were waiting to, to not only get the presentation, but to really hear from the experts, from the collaborative, and, and to talk amongst each other, you know, really that good conversation with other school districts that are different from Waterford. But we have some unique issues in Waterford that we often, you know, you know, separate us, you know, from, from other school districts, but just kind of with the budget numbers, you know, I think if we can get that increase from the legislature, if anything comes from this study, this at least gives us on its face grounds or data to take to the legislature and say, hey, look, we're being underfunded. So you're talking about this, this increase in per pupil funding, you know, at, as Keith had stated, the biggest increase that the governor had said before, the biggest increase that we have seen in his administration for his eight years that he's been in office, and Keith marked that at about $238. We need that, and we need more. So if anything, you know, the public, get out there and lobby your legislators and tell them, you know, Waterford School District needs that money, and if, if the governor is willing to say that he'll approve it if it hits his desk, you know, it's the legislator's part to use that information that we're getting from the collaborative, take it to the legislators and say, hey, you know, take care of our kids here.
And I think this is really a good missing piece that we haven't had before, because we've gone to the legislature with no data. We've gone without a study. We've gone without any hard numbers to say what does it really cost to educate a child. And so now that we have that, we can't put it in a binder, put it on the shelf. We have to use that, and we have to make sure that we continually press this issue about adequate funding across the entire state, not just for us. We're the second to bottom tier. That means there's a tier below us also, and so, you know, this is something that I think will really help us in the future, and so we'll continue to bring it up here, and we'll continue to revisit this. I meet with legislators all the time, and we'll continue to bring it back up with them and urge everybody to do the same thing so that this doesn't die. It was a bipartisan effort to create this, and it was also the people that represented the entire state, so no one can say that, you know, one area was favored over another, or it was just, you know, Republicans or just Democrats. This was bipartisan, and so this is something that there's quite a bit of agreement on. Now we just have to make it happen.
Any other questions for Keith?
So I know you're on the road a lot with a lot of what's going on in Waterford schools, so is this one of, you're going to put in your bag of presentations? Because it's one thing for legislators to hear from the seven of us, but clearly, you know, I, I agree with John Paul. It's great to see the Waterford comparison, and, you know, those who've been around longer than that know that 80 percent of our money used to come from Waterford, now comes from the, 80 percent come from the state. And so really, we're a state-run operation. Until the state legislature takes some real action on a real study, you know, it's hopeful.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we need to keep this going and all the different conversations that, that we have, and I see you're suggesting that I plug this into the State of the Township address next week, and I certainly can do that. And any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the Michigan Association of School Boards, Board of Directors Elections. We, Waterford School District is in Region 8, Oakland, McComb, Wayne. So there is an opening, and there are four candidates, so if there's any board members, first of all, who know any of the four, that want to share, you know, not just tonight, but with the rest of us, or if anyone has an opinion on who, we get one group vote as a board for one candidate, which we need to take that action by our March 1st board meeting, so. Next information item is the Michigan Department of Transportation Performance and Indemnification Resolution.
Hi, this, this resolution is basically an agreement with the Waterford School District and AMCOM, who is putting in our fiber network. And the Michigan Department of Transportation requires us to have some kind of agreement so that AMCOM can submit permits on our behalf. And also, it's an agreement between AMCOM, the district, and the Michigan Department of Transportation when we cross roads, bore underneath them, and it basically holds us not liable for, for things that, that happen during this time. So this will be going for action next week, and it's something that, for us to move forward, for them to require, though some of those required permits, AMCOM is waiting on.
Any questions for Mr. Holly tonight?
When you say we're not liable, it would be AMCOM? They would be the liable party?
AMCOM would, if, if something happens, if someone gets injured, it would be AMCOM that would be liable. It basically holds the Michigan Department of Transportation harmless.
Okay, and us as well.
And us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move to audience comments on action items. I don't see any comment cards on action items. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to comment on an action item? With that, we move to approval of the minutes. Secretary Pickett.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2018 interim meeting. I so move.
Moved by Secretary Pickett, supported by Member Hallz. Any comments or questions?
All's in favor?
Motion passes 5-0. Move to the accounts payable for January 2018. Acting Treasurer Bargain?
Okay, I've never done this, so okay. Accounts payable for January 2017-18. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the check electronic funds transfer register for the month of January 2017-18 as listed on pages 1 through 186, and the fifth third account statement, pages 1 through 3. Invoices have been processed by accounts payable and purchasing per requisition submitted by various departments, all within prescribed budget allocations. I so move.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions?
All's in favor?
Motion passes 5-0. School District Financial Statement?
The board is in receipt of the statement of revenues and expenditures ended January 2018.
Thank you. Next, we move to new business. Secretary Pickett?
Superintendent's Recommendation 73-17-18: Teaching Contract Changes and Appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teaching contract changes and appointments presented for the 2017-2018 school year. I so move.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions?
All's in favor?
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Superintendent's Recommendation 74-17-18: reinstatement of Student A. In keeping with Michigan law, a committee consisting of school board members, a school administrator, teacher, and parent of pupil in the district reviewed the petition for the reinstatement of a student previously expelled by the Waterford School District. After reviewing all facts and information in the matter and giving careful consideration to the applicable state law, the committee recommends that the Board of Education reinstate the student with conditions. I so move.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions?
Just having sat in on that committee with President Himmelsbach, I'm feeling very confident about this decision and happy to be able to do that.
Thank you. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Discussion Items. Information Item on a Bid PAC 1803: Mesa Middle School Renovations, Mott High School HVAC Upgrades. We have information on the T2 video surveillance and cabling infrastructure. We are taking action on the resolution for National School Breakfast Week on March, for March 5th through 9th. We will take action on the MASB Board of Directors election. We'll take action on the MDOT Performance and Indemnification Resolution, and there will be a board study session on the budget, February 21st, Crerity, in room 104 at 6:00 PM. Are there any Board of Education reports?
Can I, John Paul?
I have a couple. Do you want to get on the line, or?
I don't. What do you want to do? You want to start with?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Yes, last week, during the board report, I brought up several board bylaw violations, and I've heard nothing about it in the last two weeks. I would assume that such a thing would be a high priority matter for us as a board, and it would be on the agenda tonight, but it was not. So I did not ask for it, so I am asking now that next week we add it to our regular meeting agenda as a discussion item, so we can have a full board discussion about how we need to change our way of operating to be in compliance with our own bylaws. And then also, at last week's meeting, we discussed in the beginning, the special meeting that was scheduled on February 8th to discuss the budget. We did go forward with that meeting, and that meeting was a great beginning to where we need to be headed. It was a wonderful discussion. We listened to parent comments. Mr. Torres ran the meeting, and we listened to parent comments, and we were able to address the parents directly and, and have a discussion. I believe that all attended, all that attended, and there was approximately 10 audience members or so, 12, you counted, I didn't count specifically. It was about 10 audience members, new people who we hadn't seen here before, and some that we had, the superintendent and three board members. All of us, we learned a lot from that dialogue. We had established a second meeting on February 21st at 6:00 PM here that was supposed to be taped and televised as, as, because then we would have a full quorum, because we didn't end up taping that meeting because we didn't have a full quorum. Megan, our school secretary, or the secretary to the board, specifically pulled all board members on the dates that this, when this auditorium was open. Now, however, the location has been changed, and no taping can be done in the, in the room at Crerity where it's been moved to, from this room. The reasons for this were as follows by our board president in an email. He said that the, that needed to be moved because that space was free at Crerity, but we will be hearing soon that from another board member that this space is free as well. So that's really not a reason. A consistent location for those kinds of meetings. Well, this is a consistent location too. We have board meetings here every week, so having it here would be consistent as well. Most members, oh, there's plenty of space, and it's the best setting for a conversation over at Crerity in an old classroom. There's lots of space here. Last week, we had a wonderful conversation. We could hear people in the audience talking, we could hear each other. It was very cordial, and it was absolutely fine for conversation. Then another reason was most members work all day, and the space allows for snacks, food to get us through the long meetings. That means at Crerity, we would have space for food. We have space for food here. We can find some. There's a, there's a conference room back there if we really need it. We have many meetings at 6 o'clock where we don't have to eat that have lasted a long time, but if we want food, we can have it here. So then I asked specifically through email, when was it going to be taped at Crerity? So fine, if you want to move to Crerity, but it's going to be, is it going to be taped? And the response was, the study session meeting will remain consistent with past practice. Plenty of public space, no taping. I just believe that this is so wrong. It is absolutely, I believe, absolutely unacceptable when we have a free space here and that offers all the reasons listed above, plus the ability to have it taped, that we should not have these, I call them secret meetings, that only those that attend will know what occurred there. This is a public school board. Public. I believe we should have it here, and we should tape it so the public can see our discussion on our website. And lastly, during the discussion on February 8th, which I said was wonderful, lots of back and forth, lots of questions and discussion about our budget, I again brought up our bylaws and how the hiring of staff and giving raises without board approval is violating our bylaws. We have over $3 million, and that's like way over $3 million in unchecked hiring that did not pass through the board, and it is absolutely in need of a board oversight. However, Dr. Wonderlich told me at that meeting on the February 8th in front of all those people that he believed that it was in the policies that allowed him to hire these people without coming to the board, that that was where it was. I thought it odd that the bylaws, our bylaws and our policies would contradict each other 100 percent, so I looked it up, and clearly, no one else on the board has ever looked it up. Because what Dr. Wonderlich said does not seem true to me, not at all. He actually said something like, it has been a longstanding practice to do things this way, and that is my point exactly. Bad practices have been started and repeated on this board, and then now they're defended as how we do things. That does not mean that they are right. I believe unchecked hiring and raises, unchecked raises is a bad practice, no matter if you're a school system or a private company. It's not okay. And to show you just how not okay it is, I will go over the board policies that clearly say we should be checking the hiring and termination of both professional staff and classified staff as worded in the policies. And I did make a PowerPoint of them. I know that they're ridiculously small, but I screenshotted the policies just to show you I'm not re-typing them, I'm not changing wording. These are our policies. So on the very top, the first one is bylaws, which is what I went over last time and was told, no one commented, or there was no reaction to that, which I, you know, we're not following some of the bylaws. But then there's administration program, and then the two that I'm going to talk to you about tonight is professional staff. Then it said, it says classified staff, which would be, I would assume, everyone else other than professional staff. And then it goes students, finances, property, operations, and relations. So I clicked on, on the website, under bylaws, and each board member has a copy of the policies here that I'm referring to, to the PowerPoint. Right here, that, that.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I set it down. Okay, Keith has one too. So the blue, I know you can't see it as an audience, but I have highlighted the professional staff in blue, and it says three, one-on-one, creating a position. So this is professional staff. These are the people that do get brought to us, that we do vote on. These are the people that do get brought to us, that we do vote on, that we actually voted on tonight, someone who resigned and then the three other people who are getting paid a little bit more as teachers because they're working through their prep time. It gets brought to us, we vote on it, and it's this part of the contract that makes this happen. So it says, "Creating a position. The Board of Education recognizes the need to establish positions which, when filled by competent, qualified, professional staff members, will assist the district in achieving the education goals set by the board." Okay? So then the next one, the second paragraph down, says, "The Board reserves the right to approve new positions." Okay, we're doing that, we're following policy, we do that because this is professional staff section. If you turn the page, Board, the next one, employment of professional staff, this is a super key piece right here. It says, "The Board shall approve the employment," and then it says, "And also, when not covered by terms of a negotiated collectively bargained agreement, fix the compensation and establish the term of employment for each professional staff member employed by the Board." So it even says, "Under professional staff, when not covered by terms of a negotiated collectively bargained agreement, we still approve them as a board." Then it says, "Three, one, two, four, employment contract." It talks about the superintendent is authorized by the Board to execute employment contracts. So we are, we're involved in every step, every step with the contracts. And then in three, one, two, zero, three, one, two, zero, "The Board of Education may find it necessary to employ on a part-time basis coaches, activity sponsors, who are not members of the professional staff." And then it says, "The superintendent shall establish administrative guidelines." Doesn't say, gets to hire them and not tell us or anything like that. It's definitely in there. So those are for the professional staff. Now, the next section is the 4,000 section and it says, it's for something called classified staff. So when you read it, it's exactly the same wording as professional staff with the change of professional staff to qualified support staff. So it says, "The Board of Education recognizes the need to establish positions which, when filled by competent, qualified support staff, will assist the district in achieving its mission." Then the second paragraph down says, "The Board reserves the right to approve new positions." So this is within the qualified support staff. Now, Dr. Wonderlick had told me at the last meeting, he doesn't, he didn't have to do it, he thought it was in the policies. And there is two extra lines on the bottom of this, this section that is not in the professional staff one, and I believe maybe one of the lines is where this is coming from, but you don't read a policy line by line and pick and choose, you read the whole policy. So down at the bottom, it says, "The Board or Superintendent may create a new position or increase the number of support staff in any existing position." Okay, so I don't know if that's what's getting taken and saying, okay, I get to, I have the right to create new positions, but then the next line says, "The Board shall, upon the advice of the Superintendent, consider the advisability of creating a new position or of increasing the number of support staff in existing positions." So the Board is involved. The Board is involved. I don't see it any other way, but I'm sure I'll be told it's not accurate, but this is how I'm looking at the policies and seeing this. The next step, or the next one, it says, "Four, one, two, zero, employment of support staff." Again, the exact same phrase that was in the professional staff. It says, "The Board shall approve the employment and also, when not covered by the terms of a negotiated collectively bargained agreement, fix the compensation and establish the terms of employment for each support staff member employed by the district." So I see that as the exact same phrasing with a different name, different employee group, as we do for professional staff. So I don't understand why we are not doing that for all these blue book positions that just get hired without coming across our table. And then there's also, the last step here is about termination, that termination of these employees should be brought to the Board. Hopefully, that's not happening enough, but I just know in my year here, I haven't, I haven't done anything, seen like that. But the point is, this policy has the Board involved in hiring and terminating all aspects and to say that our policies say that we don't have to bring people who are not contractual up to us is just not right. So in summary, I believe that we have to start following our bylaws and our policies. That is what every instance that I've had this year has been, you can bring it right back to a bylaw or policy that I, that has not been being followed, giving, giving information freely, following these, these practices. I'm deeply concerned by this pattern of behavior and it must change. Just taking this a bit further, think of it this way. If our Superintendent and this Board doesn't follow its own bylaws and policies, which are our rules, why should teachers follow the policies? Why should any staff member follow the policies we have? Why must students follow the policies that we have? I'm asking that a policy discussion also be added regarding, regarding hiring practices for all employees be added to the next week's agenda as a discussion item, along with a bylaw discussion previously requested.
Well, sorry, let me catch up. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. As far as what Member Bargan just commented, I, you know, I think it could be clearly, simply fixed. In my seven years of being on this board, I don't think there's ever been one employee that's been brought to this board that I can think of as a recommendation to hire has been turned down. There's not been, you know, maybe five recommendations, ten at the most throughout seven years, where maybe there's been two or three people against it. And I said this last week, the reason that normally a recommendation gets approved, seven to zero, is because it's the right thing. There's nothing to debate, you know, they're not going to bring us bad recommendations. They do what's best for the district. So to me, a very simple fix and I think Member Bargan has some valid points. It's in our bylaws. I think Dr. Wonderlick had some. This is the way it's always been done and the Board's okay with it, so what's the problem? A simple fix, bring the blue book employees to the Board, we vote for them, we move on. Very simple, guys. It's a conversation to have and it would be so simple, but it seems like we have sides that are battling and very simple, bring it to the Board, the way the bylaws say, and it's probably going to get approved. So that's my two cents on that. As far as something that took place at the beginning, I am really, really upset at this Board right now. Basically, it started off the meeting with a conversation that we wanted to have a vote to add something to the agenda, talking about our special meeting, our study session next week. All that was asked was, we discuss it. We discuss it, a simple conversation, and it basically got turned down. No. Again, why? What is so wrong about having a simple conversation? Doesn't mean the Board meetings, or the meeting's going to get changed, but it means it's a conversation between five board members and we talked about it. I think Member Hallz had stated she didn't need to know, we were given the reasons today this morning. Well, one of those reasons was we have to pay for this building. All day long, I've been dealing with the supervisor and the people here of this township because we were told that some employee at the township told, is invoicing the district for our meetings. And the supervisor, the treasurer, the clerk, the DPW all said, "No, you are not getting invoiced." So that was one of the reasons given and at 4:30 today, I received a call from Mr. Himmelsbach. He said, "No, we don't pay. We haven't paid since 2012." So one of the reasons for not having it here was not even valid. You know, and again, a simple mistake. It wasn't anything wrong, nobody was trying to hide anything. You know, I don't criticize anybody. It was a simple mistake, but we found out that we do not pay for this room. We haven't paid for this room. It's free. Simple. But again, to not have a discussion, you know, I look, and I've been on the Board seven years, every study session we've had has been at Crerion. I've never had a problem with it, it's okay. But Member Bargan brought up some great points. Why not tape it? Why not videotape it? We had 12 people show up to a special meeting last night. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11 people here tonight. These seats are a lot more comfortable than hard chairs in a classroom at Crerion. Why, it's not, to me, it's not a big deal if we have it here and it's videotaped. It gives people the opportunity to watch the meetings, to see the meetings, to be involved. And these chairs, again, are a lot more comfortable than the ones at Crerion. So I am disappointed that we just didn't even have a discussion. We could go back and forth and talk about it and just, and again, if it didn't end up moving here, so be it, but we at least talked about it as a Board, you know? So that, that makes me sad that we didn't, couldn't even discuss it. You know, and I know you could say, "Well, you're discussing it now." It's not really discussion, it's board member comments, you know? We speak kind of one at a time and we move on, so it's not really a discussion. I wish we would have had that discussion, so. But like I've said, we move on. Last thing, something a little happier I want to talk about is I am the liaison for the district for the Waterford Youth Assistance. One of the great nights of the year is something they have, the Youth Recognition Award Night. It takes place this year, Wednesday, April 25th, at Waterford Kettering. Basically, any student, child in this Waterford area can be nominated for the good stuff that they do, whether it's, it's helping a senior mow lawns or shoveling snow or volunteering somewhere or doing good. The kids that are doing this, they get a chance to be recognized. They have, they get all kinds of certificates and awards from state representatives, county commissioners. It's an awesome, awesome night to really highlight some of the great kids we have in this community. Anyone can be nominated, you out there, anybody could nominate a child or a student. Nomination forms are due by Friday, March 16th to the Youth Assistance Office. There's an email here, you can mail it, you can fax. And again, it's a great night to where we really get to showcase and highlight some of the great, great, awesome kids we have in this community. And they get a pat on the back and some recognition for all the great stuff they do. So if you know of any kids or students that need, should be nominated, please do that and look forward to Wednesday, April 25th, the night of the awards. It'll be a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Board reports? John Paul?
So this, tomorrow, actually, I'll be heading up to Lansing for the Michigan Association of School Boards Bylaws Committee. So I'll have a report next week to report on that. This will actually be my first formal committee meeting after being appointed this past fall to the bylaws committee. But while I'm in Lansing, I'm going to use the opportunity to meet with a legislative director for a state representative to speak about the school funding issue that I spoke about a few moments ago. And then this past week, I actually had an opportunity to meet with the state legislature, state legislator Darren Camorelli. He's actually on the Education Committee and he's a former teacher. I was actually meeting with him with regard to legislation that affects my nine-to-five job, with regard to raise the age and things affecting juvenile offenders here in Michigan. But we got into the topic of education and finding out, doing my research on, finding out he's a former teacher and he is actually on the Education Committee. So he's very passionate about it and I expressed my concern about, you know, the budget, the per pupil funding. I mean, he's an easy sell. I mean, he's all on board and believes wholeheartedly in what many of us in the Education Committee do. But just again, pushing people, you know, you don't have to take a trip up to Lansing, you can make a phone call, you can send an email and it's, I'm sure you could, you could contact me on the district website, you can contact the Superintendent. I'm sure he'd be willing to give you some talking points and some advice of things that you could say. This past week, we did have a, what was supposed to be a special meeting, but we didn't have quorum, so we had to adjourn and it turned into a discussion just with regard to information about where we're headed for the next fiscal year within our district. And I really appreciated the conversation. Keith was there for two and a half hours, spoke openly and was very well-prepared, had a very positive attitude and that's what we're looking at is a positive outlook, but we still don't know what could happen. The legislature has to approve, legislature has to approve a budget, so those numbers can fluctuate. But it was a very healthy conversation to have so we can at least see what direction we're headed, even though we don't have concrete numbers and we still, I know we just had our student count, but we still.